Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you could all stand to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let the record show that all board members are present. And before we begin, I just want to take a look out. Look at all these beautiful faces with no masks. Been a long time coming, but we're here. So thank you everyone for your patience. And we're really looking forward to moving ahead. At this time, I would like to offer anyone who can come up and speak regarding an agenda topic. Can I have a motion, please, for approval of the minutes of the February 15th, 2022 planning session and the February 28th, 2022 special meeting? Some more.
Second.
I'm sorry, guys, I want more. There's also the March 8th, 2022 special meeting. And I do need to make amendment to the March 8th, 2022 meeting in the minutes. There is a typo. It says District Wise. It should say District Wis-E. So we'll make the amendment. You can have the motion now, please.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Taylor is not with us tonight, so Ms. Burns, you have the pleasure of personal.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. So typically at this meeting is a meeting at which we approve many of our retirement. So I'm going to start with the rest of the agenda. They have a motion to approve items A2, T2, Seal 1, and all items under Other as a consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion to approve the retirement of Karen Accalo, Director of English Language Arts, effective August 15, 2022, after 20 years of service to the West Isaac School District.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
And Mrs. Accalo, if you can have my call any of the retirees who are here, just wave me down so we can applaud you and your work here in the district.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Tanner Burns, Mathematics, effective July 1, 2022, after 19.5 years of service.
Some more. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion to approve the retirement of Linda Condreras, Special Education, effective July 1, 2022, after 21.5 years of service to the district.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of James Dooley, Physical Education, effective July 1, 2022, after 35 years with West Isaac Schools.
Some more. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Kristin Brasi, Elementary, effective July 1, 2022, after 34 years of service to West Isaac Schools.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Anette Starick Art, effective July 1, 2022, after 37 years of service to the West Isaac School District.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Darius Solano, Elementary, effective December 31st, 2022, after 21 years with West Isaac Schools.
Some more. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Donna Velez, Elementary, effective July 1, 2022. After 30 years with West Isaac Schools.
In the same crew. That's where the charts are. You had to stay there.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Teaching Assistant Linda Cassiola, Special Education, effective May 1st, 2022, after 23 years with our students.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
They have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Francine Simone, Special Education, effective June 25th, 2022, also a teaching assistant, after 27 years with West Isaac Schools.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, last but certainly not least, they have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Randy Kovar, Maintenance Mechanic 3, effective April 30th, 2022, after 24 years of service to the district.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
So I would like to wish all of our retirees much good health and happiness. And I'm sure we'll be crossing paths as we plunge on the beach.
If I could also echo that, I really appreciate all the effort and service of all those teachers who retired tonight. I always say that I never feel old as one of the teachers that still works here when I went here. And Jim Dooley was one of those teachers who worked here, and I had him as a coach and a teacher, so now I guess I'm officially old. Congratulations to all those people and all the service that you've given to this community. We appreciate it.
Yeah, most definitely. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you all for the years of service. And as a parent, Ms. Velez, you were the only teacher of the group that I had the pleasure of having my kids be in your class, and we thank you very much. And we wish you all the best and definitely enjoy that retirement.
Okay, on to our curriculum update with Ms. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening, everybody. We are getting into our ELA and Math State Test season. Our ELA test will be given to our 3 through 8th grade students throughout March and April. The ELA test will be given to 3 through 5 on March 29th and March 30th, and to students in grades 6 through 8 on March 31st and April 1st. The Math test will be given to students in grades 3 through 5, April 26th and 27th, and to students in grades 6 through 8, April 28th to 29th. Students will take the test on their Chromebooks. They will have an opportunity to practice the test-taking format on the online system prior to the administration of the tests. And the building principals did send out letters earlier this week to all of our elementary and middle school parents. So if you do have any questions in regard to the state tests, please make sure to contact your building principal. We have some really great things happening in our buildings throughout the school district that I just wanted to take a moment to share this evening. Congratulations to Beach Street Middle School 8th grade student Leah Gallagher and Eliana Wooler. Their artwork has been selected to be part of the 32nd Annual New York State Art Teachers Association Legislative Student Art Exhibit. The artwork is printed and posted on the NISTA website and will remain there until December. And I would like to thank Mrs. Culver for supporting the students in this endeavor. On Wednesday, March 2nd, Judge Joseph Bianco visited Mr. Wallace's College Business Law classes up at the high school to share his experiences as a federal court of appeals judge appointed by the President of the United States. He explained to the students that the number-one obstacle that everyone faces in order to achieve success is overcoming their own fears and their own self-doubts. Judge Bianco discussed some of his most significant cases with the students and even let them try on his robe. So thank you to Mr. Wallace and Judge Bianco for providing that experience for our students. This week, the elementary L students and their classmates traveled to the planetarium at the high school to take part in a cultural immersion learning experience entitled Stories Under the Stars. L students and their classmates attended a 40-minute program that encompassed stories from around the world being read by secondary world language and L students, followed by an international astronomy experience. A special thanking to Mrs. Michelle Walsh, the Director of ENL, for planning and facilitating this memorable cultural experience for our students. As an aside, I have been approving each day trips to the planetarium for our elementary school students, so all of our buildings are once again up and running to visits to the planetarium. West Isaac High School's senior research student Paul Pilatary shared the findings of his research as a finalist in the Long Island Science and Engineering Fair on Tuesday, March 8th. The topic of his research was compositional analysis of oyster shells using submicronion resolution X-ray spectroscoping. So in other words, Paul analyzed oyster shells from the 1600s, the 1800s, and modern day to determine heavy metals in the shells that may indicate water chemistry changes over the past centuries. He earned three awards for his research. Congratulations to Paul and to his teacher, Mrs. Kroll, for helping him in this endeavor. Great work. And Tuesday night, March 15th, I will be presenting the curriculum and instruction budget for the 2223 school year at 7:30 here in the Beach Street Auditorium. And I look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. All right, on to financial matters and business items with Ms. Pallotti.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The treasurer's report for the month of January had a beginning balance of $42,320,438.87 and an ending balance of $84,258,519.66. May I have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4133 through 4142 for the general funds and 4137 through 4139 for the capital fund?
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Seal's bid for the RFP number 568 for direct diversion?
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a health services contract with Smithtown Central School District in the amount of $2,358.72?
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of surplus items at Beach Street Middle School? A paper cutter rack and a couch.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a change order from Mount Olympus Restoration in the amount of $1,700 for West Isaac High School?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Pallotti. And I completely skipped over the board committee report, so I apologize for that going out of order. But here we go. Education Committee, Mr. Antonello.
Thanks, Mr. Tussi. I thought you didn't want to hear my report. The Education Committee met on Tuesday, March 8th, at Beach Street Mallory. The meeting started at 7:05. In attendance were committee members Debbie Brown and myself. Also in attendance were board members Pete McCann, Tom Compatello, and Anthony Tussi. Administrators present, including Superintendent Fernanda Burns, Assistant Superintendent Dawn Morrison, and Assistant Superintendent Lisa Pallotti. The first topic discussed was the New York State ELA Math and Science Test for grades 3 through 8. The ELA test will be March 29th and 30th of this month for grades 3 through 5, and March 31st and April 1st for grades 6 through 8. Science is scheduled for June, and also looks like there will be regents exams this June for the first time in a few years. The second topic, sorry, last topic discussed was pre-K registration. It continues for pre-K kindergarten. March 16th, there will be a live building lottery. And the meeting ended at 7:13. Short meeting. Good thing there wasn't my voice.
Thank you, Mr. Antonello. Okay, Finance Committee, Mr. McCann.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, March 8th, at 7:15 PM. All board members were in attendance with the exception of Mr. McGinnis and Mrs. LaRosa. Administrators present were Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Burns, and Mrs. Pallotti. We reviewed the treasurer's reports, the payroll summary for January, along with the financial statements for January, the interim claims audit report for February, the system manager audit trail, the payroll certifications for the weeks of 2024, 2018, and 2034. Review of the warrants. We also reviewed all the board finance agenda items that Mrs. Pallotti just reviewed and the budget transfers. We discussed the single audit report for the end of the year for June 2021, which included all the grants that we received and dollars that we received for those years. We had a corrective action plan for one of the items, which we have in place. We had a discussion item about the paraprofessional union offering them health insurance. Let's see, and the meeting adjourned at 7:30 PM.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCann, for taking over for building in grounds.
Thank you. Immediately following the Finance Committee was the Building and Grounds Committee. Again, same board members were in attendance with the exception of Mr. McGinnis and Mrs. LaRosa. Administrators present were Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Pallotti, and Mr. Bossi. We discussed a variety of issues. We got BCS, who's our outside consultant firm who handles all the approvals and construction projects within the district. They gave us an update as to projects that were going on. We do have many of those projects that are going on. We took a look at the, the beach generator is still in process. There's some delays for that. We are looking at multiple projects, including potentially Paul J. Blue parking lot expansion options for any of the Paul J. Blue staff that's here. I was there on that day, Tuesday, and another parking is an issue even on a normal school day. So we're looking at potential redesign, adding some spaces to the Paul J. Blue parking lot. We reviewed the general updates, the bond, and capital reserves. You know, we've got some capital reserve projects that will be on the May ballot, which we're in discussion for, and we detail at the budget review meetings over the next few weeks. So that's where the community will vote on capital budget reserve spend on projects that we're going to do throughout the district. So you get to vote on each one of those line items. We've got preparation for the spring seasons coming on in progress to get all the fields ready. Spring sports start at the high school level, March 14th, next Monday. Middle school starts a couple of weeks after that. We talked about the Masara Advisory Committee, so we had our first meetings on February 16th. We broke it up into two sessions. There are 32 members, community members on those committees. We did a session from 9 to 12 and another session from 6 to 9. Those are open to the public. Anyone can sit and review, as many of the board members and administrators did. We'll sit there and we hired an outside consultant who's kind of facilitating that meeting, so we make sure that we get kind of a full view of what the community may want to do with the Masara property. From there, there was a smaller subset picked, which is going to be the Steering Committee, represented by 12 individuals. That Steering Committee will meet next Wednesday, March 16th, 6 PM, I believe. Again, open to the public if you want to come and listen to what is being discussed there. But that committee will actually start to do all of the work in preparation for any options that are available for that property. So the work will be, give us the, look at the feasibility from the expense side, from what the community wants, from traffic, or any of the things that may be offered for that property. So that group will then narrow down options based on facts, data, and what the community looks like. And at the end, those will be presented to the board for review. So that's kind of how that committee works. But again, if they're all open to the public, you don't have to be on the committee. Come and listen. There's no community input for those meetings, except for the committee members. But certainly come down and listen. They're very interesting and great community feedback and interest from that group. That meeting ended at 7:45, and we look forward to the next Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. On to our Special Education Committee with Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening, everyone. The Special Education Committee met at 8:30 AM on March 9th, 2022 via teleconference. In attendance were myself, board member Ron McGinnis, administrators Jean Dowling and Dawn Morrison. We discussed change replacements within special education. We also discussed budget, and the meeting adjourned at 8:50 AM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Brown. And finally, our Health and Wellness Committee with no other than Mr. McCann.
Thank you. We had the, also the Health and Wellness meeting was Tuesday, March 8th, at 9:30 in the morning at Paul J. Blue. There was a host of community members and administrators present at that meeting. That was at Paul J. Blue, so that's why I was there, knowing what the parking lot looked like at that time. We reviewed the financial report. We're in good financial shape. The newsletter went out. Hopefully everyone received that in the mail about three weeks ago. So great educational articles there. We had a March Into Wellness event that was planned for last Monday, the 7th, which we actually canceled for kind of lack of attendance. It was an event that we did two years ago, which incorporated having a yoga, having families come and participate in different sections. So we had an art section, a yoga section, a mindfulness section, all to promote, obviously, wellness, mental health, bring families together without technology and phones. My wife and children attended it. We had a great evening. It was two hours long. We canceled March 7th. We're looking to potentially rework that and have something for this year. And we really want to promote wellness overall. You know, as we're coming out of COVID, how to get people back to mental and physical wellness, we actually decided to create a subcommittee because we had ideas of kind of making this like a wellness fair where you can come and listen to what's going on and all the options that are available in the community for wellness that we offer. You know, the canceling groups that we have, our partnership with some of the local groups, like the Yes, the Youth enrichment services, and also all of our local sports programs, including the programs that are in the schools. So we want to make this kind of a kickoff event for wellness overall as we kind of come out and get back to our normal lives and promote wellness overall. So more to come on that. We're going to have a subcommittee to look at the feasibility of that and pick a date where we can come together as a community. We discussed the 2022 Color Run, again, one of those great events that promotes wellness. We had that back in October. It was a great event, so we're continuing that. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 12th, 9:30, again, at Blue in person. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCann. Okay, can I have an approval, please, of the recertification of the district's compact for learning plan? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have approval of notice of public hearing for the budget vote and election of the West Isaac Union Free School District dated March 10th, 2022, including the propositions, terms, dates, and provisions set forth therein, and directs the district clerk to publish the legal notice in accordance with Education Law Section 2004? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have approval of the resolutions regarding receipt of a single order report for the year ended June 30th, 2021, from R.S. Abrams and Co., approval of the corrective action plan in response to the single order report dated June 30th, 2021? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have approval of the West Isaac Paraprofessional Chapter of the White Memorandum of Agreement Regarding Health Insurance? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have approval for the revised school opening plan for the 2021-2022 school year? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our superintendent's report with Ms. Burns.
I'm sorry, can you just review what the revisions were in the school reopening plan?
I believe it's going to be in their superintendent's report.
Okay, since our February meeting, much has transpired. Earlier tonight, and moments ago, the board adopted a resolution to approve the updated reopening plan. As the state mask mandate has been lifted, revisions were made to the plan to ensure that it accurately represents our current practices, which are based primarily on those that were in effect prior to the onset of the pandemic in March 2020. On March 21st, the requirement for visitors working directly with students to provide proof of negative test or vaccination will also be lifted. Faculty and staff will continue to test weekly until the state determines otherwise. We can't work our way around that. I can tell you that superintendents and other groups have been advocating to move past that, but unfortunately, it is still in place at this time. Last week, our community responded to the crisis in Ukraine in typical West Isaac fashions. St. Peter and Paul Ukrainian Orthodox Mission here on Hippie Lane has been overwhelmed by donations and has reached its capacity in what it can accept. So they have asked us to refrain from collecting anything further at this point. While the district supports Ukraine in other ways, the mission is asked that we express their gratefulness to all of you and ask for your continued prayers. Both Beach Street and Udo Road Middle Schools, as well as the high school and English department, have held their respective Honor Society inductions. So within the last two weeks, we've had four induction ceremonies. All told, almost 300 students were honored for their scholarship, leadership, service, and character. We congratulate all of the students and, of course, their families on this notable achievement. The junior banquet was held on Friday evening, and the students and staff in attendance had a wonderful time. As usual, Dr. Bridgman cut a mean rug on the dance floor. The first workshop to discuss the 2022-23 budget was held last week. Mrs. Pallotti provided an overview, and her presentation is posted on the business page of the district website. As Mrs. Morrison mentioned previously, she will discuss budgets related to curriculum, instruction, athletics, the fine arts, and technology, among other fun things, on Tuesday night. And speaking of fun things, the high school will present its musical production, Cinderella, on March 24th, 25th, and 26th. I'm sure it will be a spectacular show, so you can look for your tickets on the district website.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burns. Just a reminder, it has already said several times, but next Tuesday, we do have our budget workshop number two. And preceding that, we do have a policy committee meeting as well, which is also open to the public. Do any of my fellow board members have anything you want to ask? Okay, well, open this up to the public. All right, we're going to keep the same routine. If you have not attended, we have two podiums set up, so I'll call two people. We'll just bounce back and forth when one finishes. First up on this side, we'll have Katie Floria. And on the side over here, to my left or right, we have Doreen Angela.
Good evening. First, I'd like to start off by saying my children, and I know many other children, are thrilled to be able to attend school without having to cover their beautiful faces. My kindergartner is finally able to know what it's like to attend school for the first time without a mask. The children are also beyond excited to be sitting with their friends again at lunch. We are all looking forward to getting back to our normal school experience academically and socially. With that being said, I do still find myself up here once again to speak of the disappointment my husband and I have with the administration and in the board. The first time I ever spoke in a board meeting was several months ago. I stood here and asked about the surveys you were sending out to the high school and middle school students in regards to, I believe, was overall mental health or well-being. I asked why there was no concern to send out a survey to the parents. If not every parent, at least the elementary parents, so you were aware of the mental well-being of the younger population in regards to mask-wearing and the abnormal school environment they were experiencing. You stated there were social workers and psychologists in every building to help assist with any child's needs, which I understand is a wonderful resource for our children. My daughter has a good rapport with the social worker at her elementary school, which I'm happy about. But still, not an answer as to why a parental survey could not be sent out. I asked several more questions in regards to how you were going to assess the educational and mental well-being of the children, steps that would be taken once receiving that data, and through what measures, if not a parental survey. For two years, many of us have begged with you and pleaded with you to show some concern and support for our children that have been struggling. We have talked about the psychological effects of masks, social distancing, et cetera, on our children. There has been little to no support. There have been no surveys to see how the children of the district have fared with being forced to wear a mask every day for 718 days. There has been no follow-up in the plan. I'm sure you don't remember when my husband spoke at a board meeting over the summer, but he mentioned how our children were struggling with wearing the masks, how my daughter was yelled at by substitutes while trying to take a mask break or a drink of water. In turn, with fearing, with fearing of being yelled at, she wouldn't take mask breaks for almost this whole year so far. She would get headaches and lack focus in class and cry on multiple occasions because she didn't want to go to school or because they sat at lunch alone because of the stupid rule of two children per table. My husband was just told that the sub was a frequent district substitute, and it would be addressed with the principal, who we had already spoken with prior. No show of concern for my daughter's feelings and no follow-up. Just last month, my daughter, as well as many other children throughout the district, decided to stand up for themselves and show all the administration, faculty, and staff that they were suffering, and they were done with the masks and just wanted choice. I cannot speak for every other child and their parents, but my daughter was never asked why she chose not to wear a mask for those few days. She was isolated and segregated based on her choice. No one showed any concern for how that made her feel or if she was negatively affected by it. No one spoke to the classes as a whole about showing respect, tolerance, and understanding for whatever choice an individual may make about wearing a mask. I know I was not personally questioned or surveyed about my daughter's personal decision. Instead, I received a letter stating my child was not allowed to attend school maskless anymore, and if they do not attend school, they will be considered truant. Now that the mask mandate is lifted, you choose to send out a survey. The district cares about the children's mental health now when you have been silent for the last few years. The hypocrisy we are witnessing is stunning, and that's all I have to say with my concerns for the last few years. Thank you.
Doreen Angel? And Ms. Worley, you'll be next.
First thing I'd like to say is, good evening, everybody. And I am surprised to see Tamara Burns on the list for retirement, and I just want to share that my son, my senior, absolutely loved her last year. She's an amazing teacher. I hope that she's not done teaching. I hope that she's doing something bigger with education, maybe give her a scholarship and shit. But she was amazing. She was always available. She was always friendly. She was always supportive. I mean, no matter what time of day it was, morning, afternoon, she's just incredible, and I think it's important to say that publicly. Also, a couple of different things I have here, just mostly what I started talking about back in August, everything I talked about with DEI and reading programs and all that. I just wonder, now that the summer's coming again, my son is a senior, I just want to remind everybody, I am totally against censorship, don't believe in censorship. I think that we need to have all points of view expressed. But I will say honestly, when I showed you the packet of the reading list that came out last summer, and two years ago, the book that the ninth period was supposed to read, highly inappropriate. It was really kind of trashy. It was terrible. It was inappropriate. Moving forward for this summer, for the students, I highly suggest that you look into balancing your reading suggestions, or perhaps what I would really suggest is, I know you just have a recommendation and you don't require it anymore, which I think is a really great step, just to give the children a break in the summer and not expect them to do the reading and have, you know, have an assignment. I think it's great for them to have the freedom, especially given what they've been through with COVID. But if there is a suggested book list, especially for, actually, there's suggested books for kids, and then there's the required books for AP students, super students, I really hope that this year, because last year my son had to pick a book, they really were skewed. And there's no other way to say it, very leftist positions and the conservative opinions and viewpoints were left completely out. So I strongly suggest that give everything, give all views for everyone to share and learn from across the board, because otherwise, the children are just being indoctrinated, pure and simple. And we're also dealing with a New York State curriculum that is very leftist. I'm not afraid to say that. I think that across the board, I, and again, I've always told you, it's not all you up there, but unless people recognize what New York State is doing, the children are just not going to be able to have intelligent conversation about the world unless they see all points of view and not made to feel terrible if they disagree with one side. And that leads me to my next topic, which was the DEI committee that's going to be formed, same thing, same concept with the reading. The problem is, DEI is mandated by the state now. If you read all the literature I gave you and how, to me, how racism seems, it's not building people together, it's separating people, it's dividing people, it's making people hate each other. Because sometimes, the more attention you put on something, the more you see problems on purpose. So when you're putting that committee together, I don't know how it's going to happen, if, what is the point of having a DEI committee, especially if some of the teachers don't agree with it? So it's like, are you going to have a bunch of people who just agree with the same thing and just come up with activities and projects for these kids to do within the DEI? How about the community members and the teachers who don't believe in DEI, who think it's destructive and hurtful to students, who does not community, does the opposite? So my question is, how do you push back? Would these policies separate the current New York State?
So teaching, equity, and inclusion is harmful? Are we the same person?
All right, can we just, can we move on to our question? And everyone will have a chance to speak if you fill out a card. Thank you.
I'm going to finish, and whether you want to fill out a pink card.
You're going to have to ask the class to come down, right? Okay, you won.
You can keep doing that, but I'm not going to stop until you're done. Okay, so if you would like to fill out a pink card, follow the procedure.
Okay, this is, I'm listening. We all are, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. Okay, so that's what I'm saying to you. So when you form a committee for DEI, you have to have both points of view on the committee, or it doesn't make sense to have a committee. That's my point. Next.
All right, I'm going to ask if you, this could be your last point, because we've far exceeded three minutes at this point.
I lost my train of thought, so I lost my train.
I understand, so I'm going to ask you to have this be your last point. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so based on looking for fair and balanced viewpoints across education, which I don't think is too much to ask for, if we really want our children to be free thinkers and not indoctrinated. And the final thing is, I did mention the National Day of Prayer for May 5th, and I also, I understand that, you know, it's a lot to put ideas and programs into motion, but I wanted to know what you thought, Mr. Justin, and the other board members, about doing something for National Day of Prayer on May 5th, because if you can see the news right now and, you know, talk about mental health, I think we could use God now more than ever. One last thing before, is maybe a banner in front of every school, just saying, "May 5th, National Prayer Day," a couple of days before it happens. I mean, if God is a bad word, I don't know where we are as a country, okay? So even if you're on your banner in front of the high school, the electric one, it's just National Day of Prayer. Because as far as not because we're without God, our country is done. But thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it.
Before Ms. Worley speaks, we do have Catherine Abbottello. You'll be next. Ms. Worley?
Hi. I just had a question about the pre-K enrollment. I know it was kind of mentioned at the meeting on Tuesday. I know we have 247 enrolled and 32 selected to go to South Shore themselves. I'm just wondering what the capacity that South Shore can actually handle of our students, and if they can't handle all of the students, do we have another school they were planning to send them to, or, I don't know if we've gotten that far with it, or I just, I'm just curious about the details of that.
That's a great question. I have had the opportunity to sit down on South Shore Children's Center, and we have been assured, we walked through the physical layout of the preschool itself, and there is enough room to support the number of students that we would need to send to South Shore.
Okay, cool. My last question, I know, I'm sorry, I'm digging into it just a little bit. Why did you guys send the survey out after the mandate was lifted but not prior? Just curious.
It was in response to people who had come to the podium earlier in the year asking for a survey when the masks were lifted. So, you know, we are trying to make sure that we're addressing those social emotional needs, people were concerned about when the masks come off. We all know the struggles that we've all had with the masks on, but when, once the masks came off, I don't know about you, I found myself sometimes walking into the building and thinking, I need to put my mask on.
Yeah, you're used to it. This one is, it's a habit.
I understand. So that was more or less a response to feedback we had gotten from the community.
Okay, I respect that. And my concern and my question is, we, we, I'll say this side of the auditorium, many people I'm sure have emailed you, called you, bombarded you with things, we've asked for a survey as well. We've asked for a survey to be sent out in the interim, but like, kids were struggling, yes, and kids are still struggling, don't get me wrong. They're still going to have a lot of issues with the masks coming off. I've spoken to so many parents, but they said their pre-teens are more comfortable with them on now. But that's my, my concern is why wasn't it sent out prior, besides that fact? We should be, I would think, checking on the kids before him, too, the kids who are struggling, who don't want to be masked, on both ends. That was my, the only stipulation that we've all kind of had an issue with was that it was sent out after, when you should have been asking these kids all along how they were doing.
I appreciate you being there.
Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Justin, if I could just give a little kind of commentary about mental health and wellness, because it's important to all of us, from the board and to the administrators. And part of this journey that I had started prior to coming on the board, so about six years ago, the district instituted a mindfulness program for all this, you know, trained the teachers, program in, down to the students' level, they had parent academies I attended as well, and they were really good, because we were aware of that beyond COVID, right? This is prior to COVID, prior to being, being on the board, social media, there's constraints for children that affects their mental wellness. So the district, to the credit, started bringing those programs in earlier. Five years ago, we started adding counselors to all the buildings. We've got it in our budget, proposed this year to add more counselors to every elementary school level. So a lot of it was addressed in preparation, not preparation for COVID, but just knowing that there are more out there to do. And I think probably the number one thing for mental health for the children is the fact that the schools were open on September 1st, 2020. And that's a big deal, because I say this stat all the time, like 50, over 50% of the students in America were not in school September of 2020. And the best way to assess someone's mental, the student's mental health is for the interaction with the teachers and the staff and the administration, the security guards, janitors. I mean, I know my children interact with everyone in the building, and there's a collective force that, that those teachers and staff members watch over those children. And I think that's probably the number one thing we did as a district to get the kids back in school, because so much goes on in people's lives, and to have them here to be able to help them and monitor them through that, really was, was a plus. And can we do more? Absolutely. The Health and Wellness Committee, we talked about the wellness seminar that we talked about, how do we, and start pushing that even further? How do we continue to make sure that wellness, physical and mental, is promoted throughout the district? Unfortunately, we had to cancel the event on Monday for lack of attendance, but that was about the same thing. It was about mental health and mental awareness, you know, the mindfulness programs, the yoga programs, wonderful programs. So we, as a group, as the Health and Wellness Committee, we want to promote that more and bring more people into the mix. There are programs out there for everybody, and we want to keep inspiring ourselves.
Can I just add some things, McKinnon? Because I just don't want to get, let the point get lost, because now we're sitting here with no masks, and I pray that that's the way it stays. But I think the point is that we had them here, and we did not utilize the resources in the school to make sure that, that's the point, that you should not forget moving forward, moving forward, moving forward, because we're here now, but let's learn from what we didn't do right.
Absolutely. I agree, and to what you said, counselors.
And we had those resources available to us.
Absolutely. Counselors and school staff, we put, we put a lot on them. My 10th grade high school counselor saved my life. So we put a lot on these people, but I think it could have come prior to this, where we could have been asking like, hey, are your kids okay at home? Not after everything was lifted. Yeah, kids are, certain kids are great and certain kids aren't. It was the same situation prior. Certain kids were doing great and certain kids weren't. And I think it would have just been nice to see that reciprocated prior. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, McKinnon, thank you. And before we have our next speaker, Ms. Worrap, you'll be up next.
I want to begin by thanking Mrs. Morrison, who's graciously sharing her time with meeting with me a few weeks ago. We had what I think was a useful discussion, and I am grateful to her for her willingness to have it. I have to be honest, though, when I left that meeting, having been told that the timeline from moving forward with any DEI initiatives was essentially in a holding pattern, because the district underestimated the breadth of what you were taking on, that more time was needed to provide training to board, administration, and faculty. I was not wholly convinced that was actually the reason. I am now thinking better of that position and agree, you all need a lot more training. There have been many incidents since that meeting, and while I wish I had the time to get into all of it, I do not, so I'm going to narrow my focus. I come here tonight, as I have for several months now, speaking out on the desperate need to expand our DEI initiatives. We have already established there continues to be a wave of anti-LGBTQ sentiment and antisemitism in our community. I come here tonight on behalf of several families, none of whom felt comfortable coming forward on their own, to discuss egregious acts of, at best, misguided privilege, and at worst, intentional cultural misappropriation. Last week, the junior prom, a school-sanctioned event, was held at Villa Lombardi's. During that event, it has been reported that the DJ played a song riddled with the N-word. It was bleeped out, but despite the censoring, the dance floor packed with West Isop high school students repeatedly chanted this slur aloud in its full form. Faculty who were in attendance have not been able to confirm, but some administrators may also have been present. What I can confirm is that no attempt was made to shut it down. Song played out, slur reverberating off the walls of Villa Lombardi's in a room primarily occupied by white students and school officials, and no one batted an eye. Even though there was very little to shock to me anymore, when I heard this, I was stunned. I asked myself, how could this possibly be? And then I got a few more calls, and it all started to make a lot more sense. Yes, it's been a very busy week. It has come to my attention that the N-word in its full form is common practice by members of the English faculty who have been reading aloud and discussing historical works of literature. This has been recorded across multiple buildings, by multiple teachers, in multiple classrooms. In several cases, those classes contain students of color. Now, I think in 2022, there should be no need to explain how outrageous this is, but let me simplify and be undeniably clear. While I am in no way looking to lay attack on our teachers, they already have enough of that, I expect that this will be addressed with your English departments, and that a policy will be put into place that prohibits the utterance of any slurs in any context at any time. This is not a matter of a momentary lapse in judgment by one teacher, it is a systemic problem. No more excuses, no more apologies, no more brushing it under the rug. Because what is happening here is you have set the example. It's okay in the context of reading literary work, it's okay in the context of song lyrics. No, no, it's not. The role of our schools is to prepare our students to be functioning members of a global society. There are those here, I'm sure, who would say that this is the role of the home. Well, if that's the case, look where we are. The parents have failed, and so have you. What I have laid out for you tonight are just two more examples to add to a rapidly growing list pointing to why implementing DEI practices is so critical. You say you have been doing it all along, I disagree. Many, many districts across this island are doing it, and they are doing it well. I urge you to look at them. Professional development in this area is readily available. I implore you to consider it, because one student being subjected to an assault with a derogatory slur is unacceptable. Perpetuating and allowing a barrage of it is unconscionable.
Mrs. Abbottello? I appreciate the information. I was not aware of what you allege transpired at the junior prom. I will follow up with Dr. Bridgman tomorrow. As far as the work of literature you're talking about, you're talking...
It's shown to have a few years not having fun. He was dear to you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'd like to respond to Mrs. Abbottello, because I take what she says very seriously. She's right, there is no place for any kind of derogatory slurs in this environment. However, as an educator, I will also say that I know that our teachers have taken an opportunity to speak directly, supporting what you're saying about the use of certain words as not having a place. And they do use literature in some ways to do that. The work that you're talking about is to kill a mockingbird, and I'm very, I'm very familiar with it.
I just feel monocyte there.
Okay, if you, if you do, I will let you know that if you do take exception to any of the work that we use in our classrooms, you can, we have a policy, you can fill out, Mrs. Morrison will walk you through that, or an appeal for an instructional review. But I think that unless we confront these things directly and explain to our students why it's inappropriate, it will perpetuate itself.
But there is no justification for full out use of the word, none. The N-word is an acceptable terminology to be used, and that is what should be used. I cannot believe that anyone could possibly justify the full out use of the word, particularly that anyone could possibly justify the full out use of the word, particularly but in classes where there are students of color sitting before them. That is an absolute assault on those children. That is traumatic to those children.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's one speaker at a time. We will follow up.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before Ms. Walrap speaks, I also want to invite Laura Vettieri to come down to be our next speaker. So Ms. Walrap? Thank you for switching sides.
Good evening. I wanted to begin by circling back around to the question of central air conditioning. It's been several months since this was spoken about, and the last time you indicated that it was under discussion. If you could please, I don't know, update us on how that's going?
Yes, sorry about that. We actually did discuss that, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we're finalizing the quotes on that. We want to get the final prices. And part of the ask at the main budget vote, we learned in the budget sessions, is to start a second capital fund to fund projects like that. So once we have the numbers and know what that fund can be, that's certainly on the path of the air conditionings are going in, in the cafeterias and the auditoriums.
And nurses' offices.
And the nurses' offices. And then after that, we're looking to do all the buildings.
Okay, so is there a timeline of sorts for the cafeterias and stuff like that? Thank you.
That'll be done...
You know what, Mrs. Palladi, I have so many different lines going through my head right now. That's this summer?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's through the... Right. So what's happening is all the supply ceilings throughout the district are being replaced, anything left. Manituck has still a lot of them, but there's just pieces of other buildings. Once those are done, then we can start with the air conditioning project over the summer. Cafeterias, nurses' office, and the auditorium, middle schools and below.
Okay, awesome. That's good news. So the other questions I have are regarding the hiring of the new superintendent. I saw that you guys have chosen a firm and that they're under contract. Will you guys be searching on your own as well?
No.
No. Okay. Is it possible to provide a copy of the contract via email or something?
It's online.
Okay, I did see it. Thank you. Who will be screening the candidates once the firm has...
So the firm will do the initial screening. They are going to sit down with interested parties, board members, community members, groups, teachers, the whole thing is being put together by them. They want to get feedback for what the interest of all the parties are, using all that information. They will do the initial screening and then move forward and send however many candidates to us and the board, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so how, how would we get involved in that? Like, will there be information coming out so that people can sign up?
There's going to be a notice put out. I assume it's going to be on the website. We're actually in the process, the consultant committee is in the process of putting that together now. And there will be notification for how to join the community forum.
Okay, great. Let me see here. What is the target date that we're looking to secure a new superintendent by in order to ensure smooth transition?
I mean, in a perfect world, it would be July 1, but we can't guarantee that. Our concern is getting the right person. And if that's August 1, September 1, so be it. But, you know, we have wants, and, you know, ideally, a transition period would be fantastic. But I think we're more concerned with getting the right person than rushing it via time.
Yeah, agreed completely. Okay, are you considering any internal candidates for the role, or just...
Way beyond where we are right now, and that is not something that we should be discussing at this time in this meeting.
Okay, there's just, a lot of people are very curious about the whole process and what to expect.
The community forum is being established so that community members can meet with consultants and give them feedback as to what you would like to see in the superintendent. But the role of the Board of Education is to hire the superintendent, and the Board of Education does that.
Okay, understood. What, what, what does that vote look like? Is it public, or when the board actually votes on...
Like any personnel agenda, you vote publicly to appoint somebody to a position here in school.
Okay, I just was not sure. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walrap. Before, Vettieri, am I saying that correctly?
Vettieri.
All right, good. We'll have Julie Lella will be next.
So why did you, I looked at the contractor that quickly that came out of reporting district wise consulting firm. Why did you choose that particular firm?
So, here's a few things I went into it, but we interviewed a couple of different firms, and it was, part of it was, after speaking with them, their approach, their understanding, what appeared to be their flexibility. There was just so many different things that just made us feel comfortable using them. Being in education for 23 years, anyone that knows education is a very small world. So I've had the pleasure of having word of mouth recommendations from other school districts and other school boards that have used them as well. So we put all that into consideration, and after vetting several of the consultant companies, this is the one the board decided to use.
Okay, so my one question was, because I feel like we're putting all of our eggs in one basket. So why didn't we sign up with maybe two firms? Because I noticed we've been a retainer. So is that how every single firm within the educational industry works?
I can't answer that as how every other firm works. That I don't know. But that's how this one works.
Okay. So now, let's say if a West Islip employee wants to apply to the position, and the firm, I read that it's a $23,000 fee total, which I know a lot of people probably think that's very expensive, me being in resources, though it's not necessarily very expensive. So if somebody in, let's say, Mrs. Morrison or Palladi wanted to apply to the position, would we still have to pay them a fee, considering that they're an internal West Islip employee?
Yes, because we are paying them to not only screen the initial candidates, based on what our looks and needs are, but everything else that goes out with the advertising, the job listing, the postcards.
That's right.
Right.
Okay. I just, I find that a little ironic, but we're not using our internal HR department to save us the $23,000 if we have an internal candidate from our own school district.
Well, what we discussed as a school board is that we really want to make sure that we perform this search. And this is a major, major search.
Absolutely.
We want to have an outside company come in and go take us through the process, and obviously give everyone equal opportunity to apply for the job. But this is what we felt would ensure we capture the best possible candidate, if it's an internal candidate or not, you know. I think our concern is that we hire the right superintendent. Where that person comes from remains to be seen.
Okay. Because I did some research on the organization myself, and it seems like there's only three people that work there, unless, you know, I stand to be corrected. Do you know more about the organization?
We are working with three people. I know the other company that we vetted only had two. I believe this is how the firms, at least for education, operate.
Okay, because there's only, there was zero open positions on their website right now that you can apply to. They didn't update their last position for, I think it was Harrods School District, showing that it was closed as a fourth of more.
I think they placed Matapigua, the last district they placed is Matapigua. They're a consultant firm that worked on that appointment that they just made. So they had quite a deal. It's a very niche, a very niche kind of position, right?
I agree.
So you're not going to have big firms that are doing the superintendent searches. Sometimes you can go with BOSI's. BOSI's would also perform a superintendent search. We did that when we hired Mr. Sainin. You know, this time around, we chose to do a private consultant, and, you know, they have a business services that they're going to provide for us and do that legwork to present the board with a slate of candidates that they can weigh against each other and try and find the right person for West Islip.
Okay, well, I also have a whole school of questions regarding the interviewing process. Do you have anything, you know, that you can share with us on the website or email to us that goes step by step on how you're going to go through this process? Are you going to do psychological, behavioral, what kind of interviews you're going to do, and how it works, the process, from start to finish, what is that?
So again, I'll just say that we hired a consultant firm. They are going to advertise the position for us. They are going to screen the candidates.
Right.
We are going to have, as a board, because it's the board's role to do this hiring, right?
Right.
The one position that we hire, we don't hire anybody else. We approve it, we don't hire. We don't hire teachers, we don't hire directors, we don't hire. Superintendent hires. This is the one position that the Board of Education hires. And so the consultant firm will go through the steps of locating the candidates for us. They will do probably writing samples, they will do interviews, they will screen them in their previous positions, just like you would do in an HR person.
Correct.
And they would also weigh those people against the information that they've gleaned from the community. And that's what the community forums are for. If you go to the community forum and say you want to have a superintendent that is going to Water Flavos on Main Street every other day, like John Dolan, who's friends with, then they're going to look for a person that will do that. And so they will present to us however many they find that they believe this school board can then talk to or interview for the position.
I wasn't really asking, I was asking from the point that they actually submit the candidates to you.
Right.
From the point that they submit these candidates to you, how did your process go from there? Do you all get together to discuss?
I can give you what I've done in the past, because I have hired superintendents before, and basically, yes, we're in a boardroom with the candidate, and we are free to have a conversation and ask the questions that we want to ask of a candidate, based upon the information that they've given to us, the consultant firm that is, on this particular person. So it's just like any interview that you've probably conducted yourself, or anybody has sat through when you're looking for a new job.
And how many people do you anticipate to interview?
I don't think they gave us a number, right?
No.
However many that they believe that they have found that we may be interested in.
Okay. So do you have a list of questions that you know that you're going to ask these people?
I do not.
No, we have not assembled. We're not at that point yet.
And that's an individual, that's an individual, you know.
Well, as a community, I'm sure that we have questions that we'd like you to ask.
But that's what the community forum will be for.
That's what the forums are for.
And they're going to take the information, I'm sorry, cut you off.
Yeah.
Do you want, they're going to take the information that you guys want, what you share and your interests, and they're going to put that into the search.
Okay, and now, when, once that happens, are we able to participate in the decision making process on the candidates? Obviously, so then I guess it doesn't matter what question we ask, because it doesn't sound like you guys are going to even...
Well, no, because they're going to compile all of this information, and they're going to go through that information, and using that information is how they're going to seek candidates that they feel will be right for this district.
The answer is, is that the Board of Education's role to hire the superintendent. That's the answer to the question.
So then, is it going to be this board, or is it going to be the new potential board that's coming?
If this board, if we do it before July 1st, which is when I will be in Jamaica. Otherwise, it will be three new people, or one person, however, right? Mr. Holtz?
Yes.
All right, well, I have a slew of questions, but I guess I'm not going to have the time to get through them.
You can feel free to email them.
Right, email them, for sure. And also, the consultant firm will have an email address up that you can email, email that, questions, and they will include that, or email them, you know, whatever.
I just don't understand. If we have an HR department, and we are seeking our own internal candidates potentially, why are we not seeking the district $23,000?
Because they will be screened the same way. So if we did internal, that would be a different screening process than the candidates would go through with the company that we're hiring. This way it's a uniform screening process.
Okay.
Right, I mean, there's a chance our...
Just one more point. We don't really have...
An HR department, we have, we have one person, you know, who does our, our people personnel, he's not here tonight, and he may also be candidate for the position. So it's not like we have a department like, you know, you would work for in HR that would do that.
Well, what qualifications are you looking for, for a particular candidate? Can some kind of principal apply, or do they have to be a previous superintendent, or assistant superintendent?
That's one of the things that would come out of the forum, right? So you would, as a community member, say, I think we should have somebody who has already been a superintendent come in and be superintendent here, or at least had been an assistant superintendent, minimum qualifications, right? Or you might say, we think a high school principal would be a perfect candidate for superintendent. Really, we get to set what those qualifications are. And that's input that you can share with the consultant firm.
So we're going to share this information?
You can share what you believe, and we're going to take that into consideration when we set that final kind of qualification guideline.
And is an email going to be sent out to the community, letting us know that this is open for us to communicate with them?
I believe there's going to be an email. It will be posted on the website as well. There'll be hyperlinks that you can follow that will be a step-by-step explanation as to how to access all this information. We are in such, we just approved the other day on Tuesday, so we are really in the early stages of how this whole process is going to work. So a lot of your questions might be our questions as well.
And that's a procedure, a precise procedure here.
No, that's a procedure. The firm is very organized.
No, I'm talking about your procedure, not their procedure.
Our procedure for, I think we just outlined the procedure.
You're going to answer a lot of questions, so we'll tie it procedures down.
I'm answering every question, but what do we miss then?
I don't think we're ready to explain to the public what we're looking for in terms of qualifications, if that's what you want answered.
Right, but I'm also asking, when is this going to be put out for the rest of us to email that?
I would say within the next two weeks or so.
Two weeks.
Don't hold me to that. I mean, it could be three, but it will be soon. So if you want, shoot me an email. I will reach out to the firm. I will get a specific date for you, and I'll respond.
Yeah, because I'm sure there's a ton of us in this room, or any of the people around here tonight, that are going to be asking a ton of questions with regard to the candidates, how they handle policies, surveys, masks, children, pre-K, I mean, this...
Everything it takes to run a school district. We get it.
Right.
All right, and here's to a speedy recovery. All right, I'll ask two speakers. We have Julie Lella and George Debold. Julie, you'll be first.
Good evening. I'm going to apologize in advance, because I am a terrible public speaker. I'm up here because I have a concern, an issue. Mrs. Morrison, you were CC'd on an email that I had sent to Ms. Walsh. My son is having surgery, which is medically necessary. He has a very complex, complex medical history. I'm sure if you pulled out his educational folder, it would look like the Bible, this thick. Over the years, we have submitted tons of documentation from every specialist he's seen or seized, with detailed information. He has an IEP, and we are being told that he will not have his homebound instruction application processed unless I sign a HEV waiver. So I call New York State Department of Education. It's not a state regulation, as she advised me, but it's your policy, a local policy. I did have a conversation with his guidance counselor before that, before she sent the paperwork. I've kept in contact with his guidance counselor, everything he's been going through since last year and this year as well. I don't feel that's fair, to deny him his education, because I won't sign a HEV waiver. I don't need it explained to me, your reasons, because I've already had it explained to me. I guess why I'm standing up here is I'm tired. I'm tired of the fight. I'm tired of the battling. It's been years, and I'm just, I'm just tired. It shouldn't be this difficult for kids like Ryan, or parents like me, with kids that need special accommodations. with kids that need special accommodations or have complex medical histories to have to battle every term. It, it's, I'm tired. I don't, here's the thing, I don't, I don't feel I need to sign that HIPAA waiver. I don't feel your school nurse needs to get on the phone with his doctors and have access to his medical information. I, I just don't think that's necessary. You know, my son got injured on your school property in gym class in January. He went to the nurse bleeding from his nose. Not lightly bleeding, gushing blood. Your school nurse didn't call me, Ryan called me, Jim Ryan called me. How bad are you bleeding? This is something that your nurse should call, no? It wasn't until he went to see his athletic trainer, when he went to practice, that my phone rang again, and the athletic trainer got on the phone and said, he's still, you know, bleeding, his nose looks crooked, I think you should come and take him for an X-ray. It shouldn't have took the athletic trainer, why is my son calling me? She had no problem writing up an accident report, but she didn't get on the phone with me. She didn't tell me he was badly bleeding, she didn't tell me anything, she didn't follow up.
Mrs. Lella, I'll follow up with Mrs. Morrison, and I will follow up with this person tomorrow, and we'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm not signing a HIPAA waiver. So, if you want to deny his instruction, that's fine, but I'm not, I'm not signing HIPAA waiver. There's no need for it. A parent shouldn't have to go through this, they shouldn't. I shouldn't have to prove signing a HIPAA waiver when I've submitted more than enough documentation on Ryan.
The purpose of the HIPAA waiver is not for any kind of proof in that regard, it's so that we can work with the medical care provider to give the right accommodations to the child and get them back into the school setting as soon as possible. That's our purpose, to have that conversation.
And I understand that.
Well, we will follow up with you tomorrow.
But if I submit, if the doctor gives me detailed documentation of what he needs, she shouldn't need to have any access to his medical information. It's not necessary. It shouldn't be denied his permission, especially a child with an IEP. I'm just going to leave it there.
Thank you. Our last card tonight belongs to George Debold. You left? All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all once again for attending. Bottom of my heart, it was a pleasure seeing all these beautiful faces out there. Next time we meet, hopefully the weather will be a little bit warmer, the grass a little bit greener, and the flowers out. So, I wish you all a very good evening, and we'll be in touch, thank you. Trevor, motion to adjourn to a technical session, please, where the board will discuss personnel negotiation and litigation. So, discussion, go on favor, opposed, motion carries.